Did you guys listen to the power out by you?
I'd give him a call in the morning.
Okay.
First thing.
Okay.
You know, he'll be here at 7:30 so... There's not going to be any residents coming in here at 7:30 in the morning.
Ours is too much. I'm pretty out.
You know what I mean?
It's back out. Richie next. He's on a different line and they lost the neutral. So they're waiting for them but I told them shit's coming tonight at our house.
Greg?
We have problems.
I'd like to call the order of the Maryville Town Council meeting. Maryville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, July 24, 2012 at 6:32. Please stand for the invocation from Father Jose Almedina and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Amen. Lord God, we just thank you for this great men and women that are here today, Lord God, to discuss, Lord God, the business of this great town hall. So we just ask you that, right? You give them the wisdom, the understanding that they need, Lord God, and that you bless everyone here, Lord, in the mighty name of Lord God. So we just give you all the glory, Lord God, for acknowledging you, Lord, as we know that we need you, Lord God, we need your strength. And they need your strength, Lord God, to go about the business of this town hall. So we just ask you for them, for the leaders, Lord God, for the police, Lord God, for the fire department and every business here, Lord God. We just thank you for them, Lord, in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Gurnsey, roll call, please.
Spann?
Here.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Miano?
Here.
Garalcheck?
Here.
Baron? Whitey? Henry?
Here. Five members, we have a quorum. Next item on the agenda, petitions, communications, remonstrations. The first item we have is the swearing-in of probationary patrolman Gary Henry Jr. Mr. Gurnsey, you want to administer the oath to Officer Henry?
Do you have someone here that can take your pictures, too? Again, you're welcome, come up here.
Come on up and take-
We're gonna bring him up here, Joe, come up here.
Okay.
We'll swim in by the flag up here.
Put this way, Ralph, come on.
You want to take pictures or stop?
Anywhere you want to go, take a picture.
So is your right here repeating after me?
Yes.
Let John and I get out of that.
I, Senator.
I, Gary Henry Jr.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that will support the Constitution of the United States.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
and the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
that will- willfully?
that willfully.
harshly?
and harshly.
and honestly?
and honestly.
to charge my duties as. to charge my duties as.
to charge my duties as.
Police officer from the Maryville Police Department.
Police officer.
Town of Maryville, Indiana.
Town of Maryville, Indiana.
according to the law and the best of my skills.
according to the law and the best of my skills.
so help me God.
so help me God. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm working.
Thank you.
Great work, see you everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, we have two large gathering permits, one's for India Fest and one is for St. Savas Church. We have the large gathering permit application in our packet. Dorinda, are there any comments?
India Fest has met all of their requirements. And however, they did request to leave the tent up an extended period of time because they have two other functions towards the end of the month.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on that?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Mr. Hardaway, second by Mr. Garalcheck. Gentlemen, do your motion and second include both applications?
They can.
Do you want to take them separately? I would suggest we take them separately.
You would?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, motion to approve the large gathering permit for India Fest.
Your second, Stan, Mr. Garalcheck?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The next one's a large gathering permit for St. Savas Church.
St. Savas Church has met all the requirements. After working with the fire department, they will have- they have agreed to make sure that they had fire watch due to not having a sprinkler system in the pavilion yet.
Motion for approval of St. Savas Church.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Garalcheck, second by Mr. Hardaway to approve the large gathering for St. Savas Church. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the opening of proposals for leasing office space in the Maryville Town Hall.
Mr. President.
This letter is dated July 24, 2012. Mr. Sean Pettit, Town Council President, Maryville Town Council. Dear Council President, Members of the Council, the Northwest Indiana Regional Bus Authority hereby submits the enclosed lease to the Maryville Town Council as sealed bid response for use of the Maryville Town Hall by the Regional Bus Authority. Please contact me if you have any questions or concerns. Sincerely, Timothy A. Brown, Executive Director.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, the Council should note for the record that the RBA proposal was the only proposal in response to the legal notice that was published and that the Council members have before them a proposed lease document. It's entitled Lease Agreement Between the Northwest Indiana Regional Bus Authority and the Town of Maryville. If the Council members wish to enter that lease agreement, it would be appropriate to do so by motion, second, and roll call vote.
Motion to accept lease agreement.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Spann, seconded by Mrs. Miano, to accept the bid proposal from the Regional Bus Authority to lease space here in the Maryville Town Hall. Are there any questions?
At this time, Mr. President, I declare a conflict of interest as the President of the Regional Bus Authority, to my will abstain from any vote.
So the office door is going to stay locked between the two offices? Is that what we're considering?
I believe it is. Mr. Fink?
Yes, sir.
Is the door going to remain locked between the administration office and the RBA?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. My conversations with Tim is that there's going to be confidential records related to the RBA. And I've already talked to Charlotte. Those doors will be- that door will be locked. And so then Tim will go in and out through the hallway. And then his responsibility will essentially to make sure that that door is locked. And then if Tim will have to rekey those doors, and that'll be the expense of the RBA, we'll have to rekey that. You know, maybe we'll have an emergency key. If we do, I could give it to dispatch and there'd be an emergency key in dispatch if there's a necessity to get in there for some reason.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I got one question. Do we know when we're going to have the locksmith come in?
Well, we were going to try to do that on Thursday. If everything gets approved tonight and tomorrow with the RBA board, Thursday we'd do the locksmith and we start moving in Thursday with just boxes at this point. And it says in the lease agreement, if everything gets approved, we can start doing the move on this Thursday. And primarily, the scoring shovels are already in that room. But to the point, we're just going to stack stuff in there at this point.
Thank you. Any other questions of the Council? Seeing none, Mr. Gurnsey, roll call, please.
Spann?
Yes.
Miano?
Yes.
Garalcheck?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries four, one, and one abstention. Next item is approval of the Town Council-
One more question.
I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Brown.
I would normally stay, but my kid's doing an Eagle project and I've got to get- do some construction work yet today. So I need to say goodbye and thank you very much for your help.
Thanks, Tim. Next item is approval of the Town Council Executive Session Meetings of May 29 and July 10. This is a new item that I think we're going to be required to do. Is that correct, Mr. Fink?
Yes, Mr. President.
As a follow-up to any executive sessions that the Council has.
Yes, Mr. President.
According to the 11 items of the state statute.
That's correct.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mr. Garalcheck to approve the executive session minutes for May 29 and July 10, 2012, as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item-
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to move the agenda around. There's a gentleman here from NipSCO. His name is Eddie Melton. He's here to give us an update with what's going on with the power situation. He's a busy man, so I'd like to get him in and out of here.
All right, we'll move to the standing committees. Utility liaison, Mr. Whiting's not here. Chair will recognize the gentleman from NipSCO.
I want to get the press back in here. Before you move along, good evening, everybody. My name is Eddie Melton, also a resident here in Maryville. I wanted to just-
Excuse me. We'll get the press back in here real quick. You want to get the press back in here real quick, Sean?
Um, yeah, absolutely, Sean. Because Mr. Melton's going to be announcing an initiative for tomorrow.
Thank you, Chief.
Been a long day, Eddie?
Isn't it?
It's been a long day.
Go ahead, Mr. Melton.
Go ahead.
Well, as we all know, we had hit by a pretty hard storm.
Yeah, use the microphones, Eddie.
We got hit by a storm this morning.
Yeah, why don't you give us your name and address and title?
Eddie Melton, Manager of Communications and Community Relations with NipSCO. Address 5540 Johnson Street in Maryville. We started out today with about 77,000 customers out throughout our service territory. Right now, we got that number down to about 32,000. So we have crews working on this throughout the night. We also have crews coming in from the Illinois area and other states that's going to help us out throughout the evening. So just wanted to come in and let you all know that we're working on this. I want to make sure that customers get restored. There's not going to be any restorations this evening, but we're going to make sure that we work throughout the night, like I mentioned before. I talked to Mr. Fink earlier today. We know that Town Hall is usually a location for cooling centers. So what we're going to do, we're going to bring some of our customer service representatives here tomorrow. So any residents that have any questions about restoration, they can come here and talk directly to our staff versus calling. So if you want to let your residents know that NipSCO will be here at Town Hall from 7:00 or 8:00 a.m. till about 7:00 p.m. to answer any questions. So I wanted to make sure I came and personally gave you that update.
Okay. The first question that comes to my mind, Eddie, is our traffic situation for Bruce and Chief, the situation at 80th and Broadway and Broadway and US 30 and the power to the traffic signals. Is that tied in with what's transpired here?
Yes, actually, once I leave here, I'm going into a call and all that's going to be addressed. So it is being worked on right now. I'm sure our operations team is communicating with someone.
Okay. I throw this out, Joe, just, I don't know. I'm going to throw it out. Do we need to, since these are NDOT-controlled routes, do we need to call in the state police and have someone out there monitoring? Because the traffic flow at 30 and Broadway is a disaster.
Well, I'll leave it to Bruce. They came out and put stop signs up, and that's probably the extent of what they're going to do.
That's all they're going to help us do.
Yeah, and we've contacted state police and we can't possibly stay out there with my manpower and direct traffic on a state highway. That's impossible.
Well, no, I wouldn't expect it. It's a state highway. I would think that if we parked a squad in the middle of the intersection to have them out there to control something, we're going to have an accident. I've been through the intersection three times today and almost all three times I got hit.
There's basically nothing we can do until the power is restored and those lights are back up functioning. Okay. We don't have the manpower to do it and it's an impossible task. I've been this route before. And since the lights are out and it's kind of hard to coordinate everything together without additional manpower down the road. And we're talking about major manpower.
Yeah, like I said, I didn't expect our guys.
The first project is that they can get those lights restored there and that'll help out rush hour traffic in the morning. Because when the storm hit at 7:15 this morning, it was rush hour. And we got out there, cleared the road. That's the best we could do with Bruce's help. Because state highway is no help when they're coming from La Porte. It's just like, you know.
Kind of what I thought, Joe. I mean, again, I didn't anticipate our guys. Our guys are short-staffed and stressed enough and it's not, technically, it's not our road. I mean, Bruce doesn't plow it and we don't pave it. So they should be monitoring the traffic.
And we're referring all calls to the state police. And we've been taking accidents out there. We've had a few. We had 58 calls for service in about a four-hour period, which is a whole lot, but not really a bunch. But that is above normal with six guys working the road. You can so imagine that.
All right. Well, again, I think you kind of get the gist, Eddie. That's probably a, those two signals are probably top priority as far as, you know, I mean, obviously, the customers are important, but... Any other questions for Eddie from the Council?
I got a comment. I had the opportunity this afternoon, as I was riding through my ward, to stop and talk to a NipSCO repair crew. And one of the things the guy said made the most sense is that if people walk up to him and start talking to him, then he can't get his job done.
Yeah.
Right.
So he thanked me for coming and talking to him and being able to take it back to my constituents and letting them know exactly what's going on. So I would encourage people not to interfere with the NipSCO workers. And I think what you're doing tomorrow is excellent, to bring people here so that they can just get the word straight from the horse's mouth as opposed to trying to tie up phone lines. So you guys are doing a great job. I appreciate it. My constituents appreciate it because when we got lights at 2 o'clock, we could have had a block party. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'll leave my cars here and you all need to reach me.
All right, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yes. Back to the consent agenda. Councilpeople. Council payable registered voucher approval, July 24, 2012. Approval of the Town Council meeting minutes of July 10.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mr. Garalcheck to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Standing committees, or back to standing committees, Budget, Finance, Mr. Garalcheck?
Yes, so far, we've had budget hearings with the Public Works, Parks Department, Stormwater, and the Town Courts. Tomorrow, we have scheduled the Clerk Treasurer and the Planning and Building Department. So far, we've come up with some pretty good ideals. I'm going to schedule a Budget and Finance meeting to make sure that this is the direction we want to go in later on next month. That's all I have.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on the budget? Okay, Public Works, Mrs. Miano?
All I can say is Public Works is doing a phenomenal job on picking up the branches, trying to clean up from the so many storms we've had. It's my understanding that Thursday, Public Works will be going throughout town to be picking up all of the branches. On another note, referring to the branches, Maryville Senior Services will be offering for a very limited time to first come, first served. Any kind of a branches that has to be brought out to the front, to the street. Of course, that'll be on a first come, first served basis to only senior citizens, only seniors that are living by themselves, not with their adult children in the home or their grandchildren in the home. And that's about it. That's my report.
Can I add on to that?
Certainly.
We did a, Parks Department is kind of, goes into Public Works. The body of parks, the trees, the lines, we're going through the trees, the power lines, and Public Works did an excellent job. I got people calling me thanking Public Works for that work. There were branches broken, hanging down over people's property. All this stuff was cut. They're very happy with your organization, Bruce. Good. And they've also done a good job in Ward 1 as far as cleaning up the branches. We even got a sweeper a couple days, so great job.
Very good, yes, very good.
Anything else under Public Works for anybody? Seeing none, Council Affairs, Mr. Spann?
You know what? I'd like to look at some of the work we're doing with their crime watch and maybe developing some type of sticker for each ward. Carol talked about it. I think it's a good idea. What we're having is, is we're getting a lot of what, as we look at the report from the Police Department, we're getting a lot of suspicious activities, suspicious persons. Residents are chasing these people. And I'm one of them. I'm guilty, too. So I parked behind a group of guys. The lady that's, she's over, been serving in the service right now. And here's four guys in a car sitting outside her house. You know, I parked behind them, put my bright lights on, and they took off. I'm thinking they were going to break into that house. Of course, I didn't chase them. You know, I just don't fight the Police Department. But we're getting suspicious cars. I had a gentleman on Way Street call me about a suspicious car. He said he was watching through his curtains. The kid got out of the car, went between him and his wife's truck, and he ran outside and the kid ran back to the car and took off. He couldn't get the plate number. And I've been noticing, I think it's a, I don't know, it's a beautiful Mustang, but you can't see his lights, you can't see his plates. And he's just parking in different places. So I'm thinking if we can get a sticker on the windshield that says Ward 1, Ward 2, Ward 3, Ward 4, Ward 5. And I've talked to a couple of patrolmen and they like the idea, too. And I think that sticker probably will help Maryville as far as we're watching crime activity. I think it's a good idea. I don't know what the legalities are. Maybe we should find out, can we do that at the time?
All right, you?
Yes, very good.
All right, maybe through your committee? If you want to get with Mr. Bishemi and look into that? Okay. Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Mr. Garalcheck?
No report at this time, sir.
Public Safety, Mr. Whiting is not here. But on his behalf, in swearing-in, Officer Gary Henry, he is replacing Officer Jim Lilly. Current total of officers is 48. Is that correct, Joe?
That's correct.
Okay. Anything else on the department side?
No, we purchased a couple of new Ford squad cars. You noticed they're out there, the new black and whites. They're from the Chicago plant and they're the sedans. And we have one SUV out there and we're expecting delivery of two more squad cars. That'll be on the road here shortly, black and whites. And they're purchased through funds that we generated through the Police Department.
All right. Anything else on public safety? Okay, Parks and Recreation, Mr. Spann?
We went around and checked the majority of the parks. They're in pretty good shape. There is some caution tape that was down on one of the parks. The Steffan Park had a burnt table. Looked like the kids put glue there on one of the tables and set it on fire and charred the canvas top, whatever you want to call it. And then they had all these different words I don't want to describe that was on there.
BD?
Yeah, so Carol, Karen called Bruce. We're going to try to get that power washed out for there, see if we can have that corrected. And you know what? That's a pretty nice park. I'm a little jealous of Steffan Park. So the other park, Tom had some pretty nice parks. The one on 30, the one that we want to use for like a commercial location, I think that's an excellent idea if we take that park out. Because it's right in a very good commercial business area. But we don't have any signs saying this is for sale commercially.
I think we're still in that process there. We still need to get the appraisals and stuff done before we go ahead and put any signs up yet.
We are still in that process. John and I have been working pretty closely on that. We should be wrapping up the appraisal process and putting some appraisals under contract here pretty soon. Yep. Just letting you know.
Now, the Rosenbaum, are we going to bring that dedication, the stone, out where people can see it a little better?
Yeah, I think that we're going to-
It's hovering over it?
We're going to take all those bushes and everything that are out of there, too, and maybe see if we can maybe get a donation of putting some different landscaping in there. I don't know, I was going to ask Bud and Matt to see if they had any extra trees or whatever. Because I know that when some of the people come in or whatever, they have trees that they can't put on their property. So maybe we can get something from one of the other places to where they could plant the trees there instead.
And you have a very nice ward, you know? It's almost as nice as mine. Just keep working hard, young man. I want to see you catch up to Ward 1.
All right.
A 4.3 bypassed all of us.
We actually did, we went to Sean's Ward, right? Is that the one that was way out? And he-
That's the largest ward in town, Mr. Spann.
Yeah, that's a pretty big ward. I don't think I want that one.
You don't want to go down the 100-foot driveways.
So, you know, I got a chance to look at Richard's Ward. He has a nice ward. You know, he's got a swimming pool over his head, but see if I can get it over there. I think it's Ross Township. It's pretty nice. So, you know, the wards are pretty good in Maryville. Maryville's an excellent town to live in. At least that's my opinion. That's it.
Okay. Environmental Affairs, Mrs. Baron is not here. I do have one requ- oh, Bud, you're here? All right. I have a request for you as well when you're done.
Just to give you an update, we started about four years ago on Taft Street Project. Yesterday, we signed the contracts, let the contract. We'll be having a small groundbreaking. I don't have the exact date till we get the equipment moved in the first of the next month. So you will be getting that.
Check the weather forecast on that. Make sure it's above 95.
End raining that day so we can, it's a stormwater problem.
So it's been in four years in the making with IDOT. County also, I can report, is going to clean Kaiser Ditch from the south to the north, which that ditch runs through the Calumet Park Cemetery, if you're familiar there, then on the way to Turkey Creek. So they're in the process of doing that. And we're working with them some on the Taft Street Project also.
If they clean out Turkey Creek, I lost the title as 3 the other day. Find that for me. Howard laughs, he lost 2. Anything else, Bud?
That's all.
For you and Bruce and John, or really for Matt, I received a call again today, Bruce, and this kind even for Dorinda. Sandpiper Subdivision has got a retention pond that's a part of their plat. It was recorded back in the late 70s when it was built, John. The drainage easement says that it's for the town of Maryville. However, the Homeowners Association is the same situation in my neighborhood. Homeowners Association was never established, they never paid dues, they never paid taxes on it. It's gone to tax sale. A gentleman has come into see Dorinda about subdividing the land. I've told him absolutely, positively not. Not only that, Bud, but the stormwater, we need to look at that, where we can maintain that ditch and get our guys access onto private property. Steve Bauer, our previous attorney, has said, "Don't go on private property, don't do any work in the ditch." But I've gotten phone calls about, you know, that the ditch needs to be dredged, needs to be cleared out, Bruce, once we get caught up with the cleanup with the summer kids, if we still have them. So Bud, I guess going to use the department head, work with the other ones to go out to Sandpiper with Matt and maybe Bruce and Dorinda and take a look around. Sandpiper with Matt and maybe Bruce and Durinda and take a look around and then legally we'll have to turn it over to John and see what we can do. The gentleman bought it on a tax sale, I mean, I don't know why it went to tax sale, Durinda, I mean, it was an easement that was platted, but, you know, I need to, we need to address it if we can.
We have forms that we're filling out to get access to easements, people are signing, so we're in the process, we have that already and work.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Check it out.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else for environmental affairs with Bud? Any questions? Any projects? Okay, thanks Bud. Elections and public relations, Mrs. Miano?
No report.
No report. Economic development, Mr. Geralcheck?
Yes, Accura is gonna be opening on August 1st, they're gonna do a soft opening. They've acquired all their permits and they're done with their building. Durinda was over there Friday and gave them the occupancy permit, so they're gonna do a soft opening on August 1st. He's already starting to move some of the cars over there and he said he's gonna have a ribbon-cutting ceremony sometime in August maybe. And we're working with them on the frontage road right now. Bruce was over there and Jonathan was over there with me Monday to meet with them about the frontage road, extending that to Hendrick Street.
Okay.
So, we're in the process of that right now.
Are they willing to pay for that, Tom, or is that coming from us?
No, that's, they're paying for that.
They're paying for the extension of the frontage road?
They're doing all the permitting through IDOT and everything, is what I'm understanding.
All right.
He's gonna work with Bruce and see what we got going on, so.
Okay.
And as soon as, we need a letter maybe to send with Endat.
Okay.
Where approving that.
Okay. Anything else under economic development?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Utility, we already heard from NIPSCO, is there any other reports from utilities? Okay, seeing none. Town government reorganization, Mrs. Miano?
No report.
Okay, general orders. Ordinances, first reading ordinance, ordinance 12-28 is an ordinance of the town of Maryville, even distribution ordinance of Maryville Town Council amending town of Maryville zoning ordinance.
Motion accept.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Span, second by Mr. Geralcheck to approve ordinance 12-28 on first reading, is there any discussion?
This was through the plan commission, right? It's already went through, okay.
And just so everyone knows, Durinda, this is an even distribution of development throughout town with the different land uses, high-density residential, medium-density residential, getting some spacing out there. Some of us do not have in our wards, Mr. Span was alluding to the wards and what good shape they are, but we know from an analysis previously, for example, Mrs. Barron, I know for a fact in an area bounded by US 30, 93rd Avenue, Taft Street and Maryville Road has twenty-one hundred and ninety-nine apartment units in that square area that I described. So, the densities that are going in in certain areas with certain land uses, this is aimed to address that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion by council? Seeing none, Mr. Guernsey, roll call please.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Miano?
Yes.
Geralcheck?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries, five zero. Next ordinance is ordinance 12-38, an ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, amending chapter fourteen of the municipal code, peddlers and solicitors to add article six?
Four.
Four, thank you. Mobile food vendors and amending chapter twenty-one of the municipal code zoning to allow mobile food vendors as an accessory use in C1, C2, C3, and C4E commercial districts.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Geralcheck, second by Mr. Span to approve ordinance 12-38 on first reading, is there any discussion? This is for our food vendors carts that there's been an interest in, we already currently have Madeline down at Ace Hardware, and I think, Mrs. Miano, you said there's interest by one or two other individuals to operate food carts and that sort of operation, so any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Guernsey, roll call?
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Miano?
Yes.
Geralcheck?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries, five zero. Ordinance 12-39 is an ordinance of the town of Maryville appropriating additional monies within the 2012 Geo Bond Fund for the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana for the year 2012, not included in the current budget. The additional appropriation is 1.8 million dollars.
Motion accept.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Span, second by Mrs. Miano to approve ordinance 12-39 on first reading, is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Guernsey, roll call?
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Miano?
Yes.
Geralcheck?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Ordinance 12-40, an ordinance of the town of Maryville, Indiana, amending ordinance 1201 and fixing salaries and pay for employees for the town of Maryville, Indiana for the calendar year 2012.
Motion accept.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Span, second by Mrs. Miano to accept or to approve ordinance 12-40 on first reading, is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Guernsey, roll call?
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yep.
Miano?
Yes.
Geralcheck?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries, five zero.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
I'll check with Mr. Buscemi on this, but I believe the state law now, we only have to read the salary ordinance once, so that probably won't be going on a second reading. I'll check with Mr. Buscemi though.
Very good. All right. Next item are resolutions, we have three resolutions. Resolution 12-15, a resolution of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana transferring monies of the 2012 budget within certain categories. The overall decrease is eight thousand dollars, the overall increase is the same and that effect is zero.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Geralcheck?
Second.
Second by Mr. Span to approve resolution 12-15, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 12-16 is a resolution of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana making deductions in the 2012 motor vehicle highway budget, the decrease is forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Miano, second by Mr. Span to approve resolution 12-16, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 12-17, a resolution of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana making deductions in the 2012 local road and street budget. The total decrease is forty-one hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Span, second by Mrs. Miano to approve resolution 12-17, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We have no BZA action, is there any old business of the council? Any old business? Seeing none, is there any new business?
Yes, sir.
Geralcheck?
Um, new business. I would like to call Haley up to the front here.
Actually, that's kind of old business, Mr. Geralcheck, 'cause she's been doing this for how many years has she been doing this?
I know, but this is new business.
It's repeat.
This is, this is good business here.
This is good business.
Haley set out a goal this year of sixty-five hundred dollars. She surpassed her goal of this year of six thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars. So I just would like to say thank you and you deserve a round of applause. In the five years, she's collected twenty thousand dollars for Riley's Children's Hospital. Microphone's yours, would you like to say?
Uh, Mr. Geralcheck, if I could, Mr. Fink, for the next meeting, find out from Haley and her mom and dad when her birthday is, and we're gonna make that her day in town of Maryville with a resolution at the next council meeting.
You already got one?
She did?
Yeah, the second year.
Second year she got one? Okay, then they stole my thunder.
How about if we make it a permanent day?
We can make it a permanent day.
You wanna do that?
Yep.
Every day on her birthday, every single year. Twenty thousand dollars is a pretty amazing accomplishment.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
That's my motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, second by Mrs. Miano, to make Haley's birthday her day permanent, how are we gonna phrase that, Howard?
Permanent, every year we'll do a proclamation. I'll make sure Charlotte has the information and we'll all know, and every year we'll do a proclamation for Haley.
Very good. And when and where will the party be?
Do you have anything to say, Haley?
Uh, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, Howard, take over on that. Haley, the microphone's yours, dear.
You good? All righty.
All right.
Thank you for coming out.
Excellent job.
And Haley, can I see you after the meeting, please? Thank you.
All right, any other new business? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment?
One lady.
Oh, okay.
If you could bear with me, I have a little bit of something that I wanna share with all of you.
Need to state your name.
State your name and address, ma'am.
Yeah, my name is Tracy Stratten, I live at thirty-three thirteen West Seventy-seventh Avenue in Maryville.
You can do it, Tracy, just talk.
Okay.
We're all people here.
All right. I already gave my, I'm here today to talk about the fireworks problem in the subdivisions that are going on now. I'm living with my elderly parents in a house that I was born and raised in. My dad is seventy-two years old, has had a stroke, was diagnosed with Parkinson's, and has a pacemaker. Every year since fireworks have been legalized, it has been a nightmare in our community. For approximately twelve to fourteen weeks out of the year, people shoot off fireworks at all times of the day and pretty much every day. They start three weeks before the holidays and continue for at least two to three weeks after that. In fact, somebody was shooting them off last night and I had called the police department twice last night. Since the week after Fourth of July, I've asked them, when I've called the police department, if it's illegal to be shooting off fireworks at this time, and they've always responded yes. They said that they would send out a unit to check everything out. The fireworks that have been the problem are the M-80s and the quarter sticks. They rattle the houses, they set off car alarms. We get no sleep in the neighborhood, there's a lot of elderly people just within the block that I live in. Sixty percent of the homes that are in the subdivision are still resided by families that, of the kids that I grew up with, and they never moved out, so they're elderly people. It's, it's become, and it's become crazy, it's, it's just too much. On July 1st, I arrived at home at approximately eight-thirty AM from a midnight shift. My mom was getting ready for work, we were sitting in the garage having coffee and chatting, when all of a sudden across the street, the house behind the house across the street from mine lit off a quarter stick at nine o'clock on a Sunday morning. It's getting ridiculous. I had to make sure and go in and check on my dad because he sits by the front window, and this was just right across the street. But this happens every night, three weeks before the holiday, two or three weeks after the holiday. I don't know what we need to do with, about it. I personally am going to be an advocate with the situation and go as far as I have to to get it rectified, to figure out what we can do if the fireworks are gonna continue to be legalized. We need to find a place, somehow, some way, find somewhere to let these people who buy the fireworks shoot them off. Not only is it hard on the elderly people, I have a dog that I have to drug every day for three weeks before the holidays. For twelve weeks, I'm drugging my dog. It's expensive, he's petrified of them. Every little noise, he shakes and he bears down, and I don't wanna have to drug my dog every day because there's people being inconsiderate and disrespectful to the people around them and the houses around them. I have a lady across the street who's had a massive heart attack, the house behind them, they light off the fireworks. It's, I don't know what we need to do, but I'm willing to sit down with anybody to help me figure out a solution. There's been a drought, we all know that there's been a big drought. It's a fire hazard. East Chicago, a couple of weeks ago, a couple of kids were playing with fireworks, they burned a building down. Thank God it wasn't a home, but it was, it was a shed, but it was a building. The houses in my neighborhood are forty to fifty years old. People are gonna lose their lives. Somebody's gonna die of a heart attack because of this, or somebody's gonna die in a home that's burned because we're not controlling who's doing this. It's a hazard, and I hope that somebody can help me to figure out what we can do. I do want to express to the public that if you don't agree with the fireworks in your community, call the police department, continue calling. The more calls that come in, the better we're gonna be, that the chief can go in and look and say, "Look, we've had a hundred calls this week, there's something seriously going on here, we really need to take a look at it." I understand that the police department is spread thin already, but...
Tracy, what I'm gonna have you do is I'm gonna have you get with Joe Petrusch, our police chief or whatever, and you maybe can exchange numbers or whatever, and Joe, any suggestions that come out of that? Can you get with John, maybe we need to tweak the ordinance a little bit or whatever, and go from there?
The ordinance we have, we have to copy, it's state law and John's aware of that. And it's a sorry situation that when our governor got in there, he thought more of producing fireworks than he did helping us with our budget, okay? And that's the circumstance we're in, okay? It's criticism, I'm giving it to him, and he deserves it, okay? I'm tired of it too, I'm with you on this, but there's not much we can do about it besides respond to your calls because it's legal anywhere, you sell it, okay? It's got out of control, and everybody comes to the state of Indiana to buy fireworks, and everybody comes to state Indiana to set fireworks off. I feel for you.
Um, I don't...
If you two can get together and then maybe if we can see about getting the ordinance tweaked, or maybe even petitioning the state to maybe change the fireworks ordinance or whatever that they have downstairs, or maybe we can start there.
I'm willing, I'm willing to go all the way, whatever it takes.
Can we go, John, can we go higher on fines than, what's our limit on fines, guys? Do we know?
Basically, we're just going off the same statute, we have to go off the same state statute as the state of Indiana has. Our ordinance mimics that, okay? And it's up to the judge to come down with the fine, when they appear before our town judge, she controls that. She can fine you five dollars, ten dollars, whatever the max is, but it's court costs and everything else, just like you would with an infraction, okay?
But the M-80s...
Well, I would take it a step further than Tom and not Tracy, Tracy can meet with Joe, obviously, but what next needs to happen, Don, you need to convene your committee on council affairs, John, you need to contact Judge Jones and tell her that the council wants to sit down and address this issue, the police are stressed out through Don's committee at council affairs and tweaking the ordinance, and just tell Gina, you're gonna hit these people with the maximum, you got one day. And I go through it as well, Tracy, you know, we've all got animals, we all have animals.
Dog ran away.
My dog ran away for two days because a guy was lighting off an M-80 in my subdivision over in the preserve. It's absolutely ridiculous.
It is.
It's a personal opinion, I editorialize, it's a waste of money, quite frankly, but that's their, that's their income if they wanna do that, but don't affect the general public.
And then it gets more disgusting, Tom had sent me over there 'cause there was a problem, and it gets more disgusting when parents give the kids fireworks to entertain them.
Well, that's what happened.
You get kids under the age of eighteen out there, setting off fireworks, bottle rockets, and that's where they use, lose their fingers, hands, and eyes, okay? But it's something the governor let get out of control, and there's a fireworks stand on every corner, there's one in Boomtown here on Mississippi Street Warehouse, and you know, they sell fireworks all year round.
Maybe they can all go to Tippecanoe County, come January 1st and light them off down there in West Lafayette.
Tracy, the worst thing is at nighttime, any time, and like you said, when they use it off at nine o'clock, the dispatcher gets a call from somebody in the neighborhood saying, "Shot's fired." So now you have a policeman driving to an area, lights a siren, thinking he's gonna protect someone's life, and all that was, was the fireworks.
Exactly, well, and that's the thing, there's so many of them going off that if somebody wanted to go on a shooting spree, you guys wouldn't know the difference.
Exactly right, we, you know...
The officers wouldn't know where to start.
...to a shooting, you know, and this is not, this is not what they want.
Exactly.
Believe me, as a policeman, I mean, ah.
You can tell the council kinda agrees with you.
And I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Everybody, everybody sits here, have gotten calls, what can you do, what can you do? And it's really, you know, it's like, why did the state, as a policeman, before, fireworks were illegal in the state of Indiana, but always on the Fourth of July, all the policemen kinda close your, you know, you close your ears because illegal fireworks are going off, but they always, I always had that one day. After that one day, then the policeman got really aggressive. We start confiscating, we started rescuing, started giving tickets, we did a lot of stuff we were capable of doing. When the state downtown in Indianapolis saying, "Well, this is good for the, good for the[1725.41] downtown Indianapolis saying, "Well, this is good for, good for the state, good business." It's not good business. It's not good for the people.
Well, then maybe I need to go down there. I don't know.
Absolutely. That's where you, really, you need to get, after tonight, your name will be in a paper. You're going to have a lot more people contacting, you know, contacting us and contact you. You get the group of people, you get down there, and I'm telling you now, Maryville's not the only city in the state. I was tired of it.
Oh, I absolutely agree with you.
I have a house in Syracuse, Indiana, and you thought 4th of July was on July 7th.
Right.
Everybody's blowing everything up. I mean, it was ridiculous.
Right. Well, I mean, like I said, that, you know, what, what really burned me up was that morning at 9 o'clock on a Sunday morning. What was the sense of it? I mean, it makes noise, and it does nothing. I don't, I don't want to get the call one day that my dad is sitting in front of the window and somebody across the street lights his one up, and he has a heart attack. I don't want that phone call. I don't want it. There's too many elderly people in my community that are going to have, that it's going to affect them. And Chief, I just wanted to let you know that Tom did pass on the information that he did speak to you after him and I had the conversation, and that he said that you spoke to your dispatchers. I just want to let you know that they have an attitude, okay? I've been an emergency dispatcher. I know, for three years down in Virginia, I was a firefighter. I know how stressful and overwhelming it can get, but we're in the business, they're in the business of customer service. Customer services, you know, the customer's always right. Not saying that they agree with me, and they might get aggravated, that they have to send an officer out there, and the officer's going to get aggravated, because he has to go out there.
Sure.
It's a vicious circle.
I'll address that situation a lot. The first time, when you came on the station, I believe, she talked to Tom, I went out there and handled the situation directly myself with my officers.
Yes, sir.
And like I said, it's a sorry situation we have when parents send juveniles out there with fireworks to set them off, and that's what was going on in your neighborhood. And the parents are inside playing games or doing something, and the kids are out in the streets setting off fireworks.
Because I can tell you exactly which houses it's coming from.
And I was there, I went immediately there and took care of the situation, but we monitored the best we can, and we'll do the best job we can.
Okay, what we'll do, again, Tracy, is we'll, we'll start working on this through Mr. Span's committee. Council affairs writes the ordinances or modifies the ordinances. That's the committee it goes through. We can work with Mr. Bishemi to research it and with Chief Petrush, and you're more than welcome to keep your, your eyes open, or if you want to get a contact, and they can let you know when the committee meeting is going to be. Those are all open to the public, and we can get on this process, okay, guys?
We also do a crime watch meeting right here the last Saturday of every month. The, our two wards, and things like that are discussed. Suspicious activities, suspicious character. The, I thought the M-80s were illegal, just-
M-80s and quarter sticks are illegal.
Right.
But see, all they have to do is go out there, they shoot it off, and they go inside.
Right.
You know, and-
Well, that, that's something that we, you know, maybe with discussion, we could maybe figure a way to address it. I don't, I don't want to give them a place to go and do it, because now you're saying it's okay to do it.
Yeah, there's no place it's going to be.
Yeah, it's basically out of our hands, and I think the best thing is to address the governor downstate.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Remember, it's an election year.
Yep.
Okay, thanks, Tracy.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment? Public comment? Public comment. Okay, seeing none. Announcements, Stormwater Board meeting is Tuesday, August 7th at 4:30 p.m. Plan Commission Workshop, Tuesday, August 7th at 6:30. Town Council meeting, next Town Council meeting will be Tuesday, August 14th at 6:30. The Plan Commission will meet Tuesday, August 21st at 6:30. The BZA will meet August 22nd at 6:30. Town Council Workshop, the same night, 6 o'clock, and the last Town Council meeting in August will be August 28th at 6:30. Chief, Crime Night Out, what, I know that's usually the first Tuesday in August. Is there, are there any, is there anything planned?
I haven't been contacted by any, besides Mr. Span.
Okay.
And that was about it. No one's contacted me directly. My phone line's always open. I attended meetings with Mr. Span and Carol on the Saturdays, and right now, we're back to being inactive. Donna Brown was, had restored it there for a while. She had stepped up to the plate, but right now, it's inactive. It's the community, the community has to get involved.
Right.
I attended Chrissy Byrne's block last week, Saturday. They had a block association meeting there, crime watch meeting, and that was the only one in Macedona Point, I believe, if I'm pronouncing correctly. And that was, that's the last one I attended. It was on a Saturday around 2 o'clock.
Okay. Anything else?
Mr. President, one more announcement, if I may. We have movie night this Friday, Polar Express at 7:30. Free popcorn. Please come. It's a great time. It happens in Town Hall, so if there's any inclement weather, there should be no issues. Chaz and Karen, if we could get a mention of that in the newspaper, that would be fantastic. Thanks, guys.
So we're, we're thinking about a, you know, a crime watch night out at the Town Hall. You know, I'm going to try to step up to the plate and do something.
Right.
Because I know Carol's busy, but I'll use her advice, you know?
Alright. Anything else?
My motion's there.
Second.
Shut that up.